All right, everyone, thanks for coming tonight to our meeting. We really appreciate it. Before we get started, I wanted to point out that on our regular agenda, there's item number, number one, which is the NRA for the project of 815 Vermont Street. Even though it's on the agenda, we're not actually going to have discussion tonight because technically, we have to open it and continue it until October 3rd. So if anyone is here to speak about the NRA for 815 Vermont, this is the wrong night for you to be here. So I don't want anyone to have to sit through here and wait. Okay, so let's go ahead and go on to our meeting. So first of all, we've got two, well, one recognition and one proclamation to do. So I'll go ahead and read the recognition for Debbie McCarthy. Is Debbie McCarthy here?
Yes.
Excellent. Come on up, and I'm going to read this proclamation. Did you have something you wanted to say first before I read it?
Please do.
I'll wait till after.
Okay. I'm sorry, I guess I didn't hear that right.
Oh, okay. I can do it after.
Okay. All right. So, whereas the travel industry has a positive effect on the city of Lawrence's economy and identity, and also benevolently impacts business productivity and the well-being of travelers and locals. And whereas the city of Lawrence in 2015 generated 244.5 million in annual travel spending, $38,400 in state and local tax receipts, and directly employed 2,710 people with total wages of $57.9 million. And whereas it is well-known that frontline employees are the most important resource in the hospitality industry, both for companies and for the customer. And whereas Debbie McCarthy, the longest-serving staff member of Explorer Lawrence, has provided a friendly and welcoming smile while also ensuring, oh, excuse me, while also sharing local tourism information to over 85,000 visitors since 1996, and she's retiring. So now therefore, I, Leslie Soden, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, do hereby recognize Debbie McCarthy in her 21 years of dedicated service as the Director of Visitor Services at the Lawrence Visitors Center. So I guess your retirement can drink now, 21. Hostage date.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate the honor. I currently work with probably the best staff I've ever worked with, and the volunteers over the years have been absolutely incredible. They've taught me so much about Lawrence and also about life itself. And I've had the opportunity for 21 years to tell people where to go every day. And I'm going to kind of miss that. So thank you very much for the recognition.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Just take a moment that, you know, Debbie has touched so many lives here in Lawrence, not only visitors, but also people who live here in Lawrence. And we are going to celebrate her retirement on October 11th from 5:00 to 7:00 at our Visitors Center. And we invite anybody to join us that day to help send Debbie off with a great smile. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, so now we're on to our proclamation. Do we have someone here for that? Come on up to the microphone. If you'd like, you can introduce it, or I can read it and...
Maybe you could read it now, just say a few words.
Okay. All right, so, whereas September 17th marks the 230th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to give official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Leslie Soden, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23rd as Constitution Week. And with the Betty Washington Chapter of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution in celebration of Constitution Week, we ask the citizens of Lawrence to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained.
Just want to say a little bit about Betty Washington, DAR. The tradition of celebrating and assigning the Constitution was started 62 years ago by the National DAR. In 1955, the DAR petitioned Congress to set aside September the 17th through the 23rd as observation of Constitution Week. It was later adopted as the public law, as you read in the proclamation, under President Eisenhower. The National Society of Daughters of the Revolution was founded in October the 11th, 1890, in Washington. Six years later, Miss Mary Robinson of Lawrence proposed that a chapter be chartered in Lawrence, which was the second chapter in the state of Kansas. The members included one real daughter and five real granddaughters. The name Betty Washington was chosen to honor the sister of George Washington and the wife of Colonel Fielding Lewis. So our chapter, the Betty Washington chapter, was to thank you very much for the proclamation and celebration of Constitutional Week.
Yeah, well, thank you for bringing it to us.
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right, so now we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Is there any item that a member of the commission wishes to remove? Oh, I didn't read the box. Goodness gracious. No, all matters listed below on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak to an item that has pulled off the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes, four comments. All right, let me re-ask the question. Is there an item that a member of the commission wishes to remove? Is there a member of the public that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay, so here are no removals. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of claims for 179 vendors for a total of $16,483,073.24. And there are two payments that are over $1 million. One to the Kansas State Treasurer for general obligation bonds in the amount of $12,010,141.57. And then one to Garnie Companies for a project related to the Wacarosa Waste Water Treatment Plant for $1,376,008, $1,376.87. Is there a motion?
Second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Amick, second by Commissioner Herbert. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. All right. You can scroll all down here. Now we're on to public comment. So the public is allowed to speak to any items or issues that are not scheduled on the agenda. After first being recognized by the mayor, each person will be limited to three minutes for public comment. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss, debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presenting during this time. Rather, they will refer the items to staff for follow-up if necessary. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, and state their name and address. Speakers should address all comments, questions to the commission. So this is for items that are not already on the agenda. Any public comment? Come on up and sign in and say your issue.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. My name's Ted Boyle, President, North Lawrence Improvement. And I tell you, I'm up here to thank Public Works, Chuck Soules, Mark Teel, for the work they've been doing in North Lawrence. I tell you, we've got some new sidewalks in the 400 block of Walnut Street, and on North 5th Street, and also the intersection at 4th and Locust. Asked for the ADA ramps to be updated and redone, and I'll tell you what, they went far beyond what we requested. We not only got the ADA ramps on the south side of the tracks and a new intersection, curbs, and gutters, but also on the north side of the road, on the railroad track side, curbs and gutters and ADA ramps. That is the place where Woodlawn Schoolchildren cross the railroad tracks with a crossing guard. So this intersection was in dire need to be redone, not only to bring up to ADA specifications, but also drainage problems. And also, they've done some work on alley entrances in the 500 block between Locust and Elm. And also, they took care of some drainage situations on North 2nd and North 3rd that needed to be updated, and took care of that. So I just want to thank them for doing that. And the biggest deal is, is the big pump, the new pump that we had installed about a year and a half ago, that we got eight inches of rain in North Lawrence when we had that rain. The other day, we got three. And I'll tell you, there was not any flooding in North Lawrence consequently because of that pump. We do, I am going to say this, that, and I've talked to Matt Bond about this, our stormwater engineer, about redoing the ditches, directing the ditches to the pump, because you can have all the pump you want, if you can't get the water to it, it can't pump it. And in Perry, the 400 and 500 block of Perry, closest to the pump, doesn't have any ditches. But Matt has studied that, and to dig the ditches down, we can't do that because there's a 100-year-old water line down there that was put in in the 1920s. So he's working with the water department to maybe do that water line at the same time that they bury the drainage tubes to get the water to the pump. So that's pretty well my story for tonight. I just want to thank Public Works for what they've done in North Lawrence. And on leaving the podium, we support this No Tyson and Tongue. North Lawrence, we believe that this is bad for this area, and this will be detrimental to Lawrence.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. I'm sure Public Works appreciates your compliments.
You're welcome. Keep up the good work, Chuck.
Any other public comment? I guess I forgot to remind people to please silence your cellphones. We don't mind if you use them or do things on them, but we do like it when you silence them. All right, so let's go on to the regular agenda. The public is allowed to speak to any regular agenda item or give public comment after first being recognized by the mayor. Each person will be limited to three minutes for public comment. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, state their name and address. Speakers should address all comments, questions to the commission. And we do have a lovely shot clock right there, that Sherry takes care of this for us. Thank you, Sherry. All right, so our first one's a quick one, public hearing on the neighborhood revitalization area for the project at 815 Vermont Street. So first, we have to open the public hearing, and then we'll continue it. So I'm going to open the public, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing and continue it until October 3rd at 5:45 PM, or as soon as thereafter, as it may be held, on October 33rd, 2017.
Mayor, can you just open the hearing and then make a second motion to continue it to the third?
Oh, okay, yeah, we'll all make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mayor Soden and seconded by Vice Mayor Booley to open the hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So now we do a motion to continue it for you?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll move to continue the hearing until October 3rd at 5:45 PM, or as soon thereafter, as it may be held, on October 3rd.
Second.
All right, so motion made by Mayor Soden, seconded by Vice Mayor Booley. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Sherry, for correcting that. Definitely want to do it legally correct. All right, so now we're on to number two, consider an appeal of staff's determination on site plan, and consider approving a revised site plan as submitted by the applicant that adds 10 parking spaces for the construction of two new Greek houses located on property described as Lot 2 Sigma New Edition Number 2 located at 1500 and 1503 Sigma New Place.
Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this. I'm on the West Hills Homeowners Association Board of Directors, and I voted to appeal this, so I don't think it's appropriate that I hear this, okay?
All right, so you have to exit the room, and you even have to shut the door.
I understand.
We don't want her looking at us, listening in. She does get candy, though. All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Sandy Day with the Planning Office. This item before you is an appeal to an approved site plan. Before we begin, we would ask that you declare any ex parte communications that you may have had with this project.
I don't think I've had any communication on this.
I've got none.
Okay, marvelous. Okay.
The site plan is for the construction and development of two new fraternity houses to be located on a lot that is platted and zoned for this particular use. The slide on the left shows where there is existing RMG zoning today in Lawrence, and then the slide on the right shows the specific lot that this proposed development would be located on. The proposed development that staff considered and recommended, I'm sorry, and approved includes two dwelling units. There's a north building that includes 61 sleeping units, and a south building that includes 41 sleeping units. So there's a total between the two of 102 beds. Off-street parking for this project is required at .75 spaces per occupant, and that results in a required parking of 77 spaces. There were about three things that staff worked with the applicant and the neighborhood on throughout this development review that included access, interior circulation, as well as landscaping and buffering between the use and the residential neighborhood, and then the idea and concerns related to off-street parking. The project, when it was submitted, included a driveway on the south end that would have provided a second outlet to the project and connect further to the private street segment of High Drive further to the south. For a number of different reasons, that access circulation was revised. The only access to this property is from Sigma New Place, a public street. The project that was approved by the Planning Director included 81 surface parking spaces in excess of what was required for the project. This slide really summarizes what that off-street parking requirement is, based on what the code requires. This is a comparable standard to how other fraternities and sororities in the immediately surrounding area have been developed. And I think we've put a summary of that information into the staff determination as well. As I mentioned, the project as approved included four excess parking spaces. Part of the site plan requirements and processing is that it is typically an administrative determination. That determination was made on August the 11th. The project was approved with no conditions, with the four excess parking. It included more than 50% of the site retained in open space, and surrounding property owners were notified of that determination per their request. And I think there were about a dozen letters staff sent out specifically to individuals requesting information about the project. Section 20-1305K sets out the process for an appeal, and that's where we are this evening, that notice of that determination. An individual or whoever is appealing that, there are certain groups that are allowed by code to do that, including neighborhood associations, and individual property owners have to respond within nine days of that determination. The process has been followed. The appeal came in within that timeline, and then we needed to schedule this item to be heard by this body essentially as new, following the same criteria that we would, that staff followed in the review. The appeal came in from the West Hills Homes Association, and really, their objection is about the condition and concerns of parking that are in the neighborhood today, requesting that additional parking be provided for the project. That appeal was, that information was provided to the applicant, and they provided staff with a revised plan that is included in your packet tonight, and we're asking that you consider. What they did was add 10 additional parking spaces over what they had provided, so there's a total of 14 extra spaces over what is required by code. This slide really highlights what that green space, open space, is within this project, and where they were able to pick up those additional parking spaces were by extending a little bit of the space parking area here. They extended the parking along the front of the buildings, and then they took out some interior landscape islands within the project to have a continuous parking area. This location is where the original plan would have had some connectivity, cross-access, and this hammerhead is provided to provide turnaround for emergency vehicles if that becomes ever necessary. This is a slide just showing where those parking spaces were in the plan that was approved at the staff level, and where those spaces are today. So you can just see, there's a few here and there that added up to those 10. And this change took that pervious area, that green space and open space, from 59% of the total area down to 57%. So it is still a substantial amount of the property that is retained in open space. One of the very late communications you received in your packet, and staff received, was a request that the project be required to provide some best management practices related to stormwater. Anytime a project has excess spaces, the designer needs to mitigate for that stormwater. Through a phone conversation with Matt Bond, the city stormwater engineer, myself, and the applicant's representative, we talked about how that might be achieved. They are agreeable to doing that, and can provide some effective and appropriate stormwater mitigation on the site. So we have added that as a condition. If you would consider approving the revised site plan that was added to your packet, it would show the 10 spaces that you see in that plan, and then they would also provide a revised plan that would be subject to the approval of the city's stormwater engineer to spell out what those, exactly how that mitigation would occur. Your options this evening are to approve the request, approve the request with conditions and modifications, as staff has walked through for you this evening, or potentially to deny the request.
I don't see a letter in here from the people that did the appeal for the revised site plan. Do they have any public opinion as to the revised site plan? I don't see a letter in here. Their appeal was based on the original site plan, right?
Yes.
So I would think we'd want to hear...
The applicant is here and can speak to some of that discussion as well.
Any other questions for staff?
The building that was on the left, the green space to the right of it, which I'm going to guess is to the north there, is that, yeah, the green space is just to the north there, to the right, is that, is that a sewer even through there? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yes, there's some sanitary sewer that would be extended to serve this area, and there will be a water line that it gets extended up. This site plan is oriented so that north is on this side of the page, just to have it be a little bit bigger, a little bit more oriented. So this is north, this is that cul-de-sac, and then this is the south end. So yes, that will be a sewer line extension.
And that's where it just has to be. I guess what I'm trying to get at is whether or not there is space in there to get any more parking in that area right there.
The difficulty here is, what you're not seeing on this particular slide is some of the challenges to the grade of this. They've got a number of retaining walls that are kind of wing walls that are coming out. So yes, it's open space, but it's a very steep open space.
Mayor, if you go to the staff...
Memo on your question about the letter, and under, excuse me, attachments, you'll see communications from public updated on 9/19.
I was looking in there, but I didn't see it.
It's the very last letter that you'll see, a little bit of memo style from Bill Mitchell, where he speaks about his meeting with Matt Golf and the modified site plan, and requesting that their support for that site plan.
So, but Bill Mitchell, it looked like the original appeal was from Charles Jones and someone else. Is he...
You can see there was CC to the West Hills with Mr. Jones.
But that doesn't mean they're speaking on their behalf, though.
Right, and we'll let them speak for that. I just wanted to point out that letter from...
Yeah, I saw that, but it didn't look like a formal letter from the neighborhood. Any other questions for staff? Any other questions for staff?
Who was the zoning on this property?
RMG, which is the proper zoning for Greek housing.
And as I understand it, our multifamily zoning normally requires the one-to-one parking. Is that correct?
Correct.
But the RMG does not.
Correct.
Is there a reason for that, or just the way the code appears?
Just the thought that multi-dwelling is not always student-based. As a student-based Greek house, there's the, it's, the assumption is that not every student will bring a car, that there will be a certain number of them that don't have cars on campus.
Any other questions? Okay, well, let's go to public comment. Can we have the neighborhood verify, though? I'd like to hear that first, and then we can have the applicant speak. So is it, who's representing the neighborhood here? Anyone?
There are several of us here.
Okay, so will you come up to the microphone and let me know about this email if that's Thank you for doing this.
I'm Bill Mitchell, who was not speaking for the West Hills Homes Association in that letter, excuse me, myself.
Okay.
And although I, I understand from, from conversations with members of the association and the board, that the association is happy with this, well, with, with the revised plan.
Okay.
I'm not a member of the board, and the reason I'm up here is because I was pointed at and said, "Get up there and talk." So I, I can give you a good, strong assurance that the appellant is pleased with the results of the appeal to this point.
Okay, thank you.
But, you know, don't card me, or-
Bill, it is important to know that in city commission chambers, a finger point is binding.
Thank you, Bill. All right, so let's have the applicant come up now. Thank you.
I might just put this back up in case we need it. And then I have to figure out how to do the slideshow. There we go, the one that says slideshow. Good afternoon, Mayor Soden, Commissioners, I'm Matt Goff with Barbara Emerson Law Firm. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, Lance 1505 LLC, and I'm joined today by Mr. Roger Lance, Mr. David Bodine. Mr. Lance is the manager of the project and its owner, and Mr. Bodine is the property civil engineer. I intend to be brief, but if I could preserve a minute at the end, if need be, to address any new comments, that would be appreciated. Mr. Lance has been very upfront about the fact that he very much wants to be a good neighbor. He has made numerous changes to the site plan, both before and after this appeal was filed, and some of that was touched upon already, but the, for example, the hammerhead access and the elimination of the second access point. So this has been a process that has started in one place and ended in another, and I think for the better. The project is two new fraternity buildings. The two chapters that will locate here initially are currently active chapters at KU. I think the applicant is a terrific fit for Lawrence when you look at how sincerely he's addressed and responded to the myriad of comments that this project has received. This site plan, in all its forms, from its first approved draft to the ones before you today, are fully code compliant. We have the zoning we need. All of the accommodations that are being made are being made, not because the code says they must be made, but because this applicant wants to do its best to see that the concerns of the neighbors are reasonably addressed. The initial site plan had four more spaces, now there's 14, and the letter from Sigma Nu indicating that they had concerns about drainage, you know, prompted a conversation with the staff about best practices, and I asked some dumb questions about what the best practices would be, got very straightforward answers from the staff, and I'm appreciative of how quickly they responded, and that's fine. So we were totally fine with the comment to add best practices, and that, I believe, was the only waiver given by the staff. There were no variances. So at this point, the site plan should be completely code compliant. I think this applicant's done a marvelous job of managing competing interests, parking versus stormwater. For those of the public who wanted parking, got more parking. For those of the public who were concerned about drainage and stormwater, there's another comment being made to address those concerns. Lawrence is a community that values the importance of process, and this is a great example of a situation where that process has worked to create a better project for all. I respectfully ask that you approve the revised site plan in front of you. I won't spend much time talking about some of the issues that got us here, because I think they've been resolved, but I'm happy to answer questions that you may have.
Any questions for Matt?
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right, let's do public comment.
I'm Paula Martin. I live at 1514 Stratford Road. I was the pointer. Just a little background, Charles Jones is the president of our association. He was out of state when this was going on. We communicated by email. For some reason, I seem to be the person people complain to when something happens in the neighborhood, and I'm the one that delivered the appeal, signed by Charles Jones at his request. And after that appeal was filed, the board then asked Rick Lom and Bill Mitchell to meet with Mr. Goff to see if they could come to some agreement. And so although they're not members of the board, it was at the behest of the board that they had that meeting, and I'm told by our board members that they approve the revised plan and hope it will be approved. Addressing just for a moment a comment made by Mr. Herbert, I hope that that's a conversation we can have in the future, as far as the difference in parking requirements for Greek housing versus multifamily, because we all know that every student has a car these days. But I hope you will approve the revised plan.
Thank you, Paula. Any other public comment? Come on up.
Commissioners, my name is Dwight Hillman. I lived at 936 Avalon Road for nearly 30 years, and I really, one thing that I wanted to express before I said anything else was your, how much the neighborhood appreciates your service. Matthew and Mike, Leslie and Stuart, and even Lisa, obviously, recused herself from the discussion. We really appreciate your service. The residents, excuse me, the West Hills neighborhood was not well-served by the commission, you know, when the Alpha Gamma Delta sorority proposed building on this lot a decade ago. I'm ammiring toward the project. My concern continues to be grass issues. Cambridge, Stratford, Hilltop, and Avalon Roads are packed during the, during the KU terms, and adding more residents, you know, 100 more residents and vehicles will only exacerbate that situation. The, I know that, I know that infill projects are, you know, real positive, for the staff anyway, are very positive and meet the needs of the residents, but currently there's just a single private road, Sigma Nu Drive. The east approach has a 35 to 40% grade. During good weather, it's steep and problematic, and, you know, during the winter where there's a storm access is nearly impossible. If you get a fire going and you've got 600 residents in that area, one way in, one way out, it's, you know, it's a disaster waiting to happen. I would prefer to see the, the city do, you know, require a performance bond. I think, I think that the applicant has made a sincere attempt to meet the needs of the city and requirements of the city, and to provide adequate parking, and their best, best efforts. We've spoken. But on the other hand, you've got noise, light, and trash issues that would be a concern to any resident, and, and that's, that's the situation we're in, as well as, you know, the runoff that we have. It's the hill, and, and there's a nice little stream that, you know, flows through our backyard, and in 1993, it was, it looked like the Niangwa River. Now, that said, I just want to again express our appreciation for you listening and hope that you can take to heart what would happen in the event of a, of a weather disaster.
Thank you, Dwight.
Having written to you twice already about the matter, I'll not repeat myself except to praise Mr. Lance for his good neighborliness in quickly making some design, design change to parking to increase somewhat the inadequate onsite parking. Good neighborliness certainly, but also enlightened self-interest, I think, for he must have realized that code parking requirements for RMG are woefully insufficient. And thank you in advance for approving, I hope, the modified site plan and for beginning to think about revising RMG parking requirements in the code. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Any other public comment? All right, let's bring it back to the commission. Well, I actually had a client up there that I walk their dog for 45 minutes every weekday all through that neighborhood. It's a great big poodle. I don't know if you guys remember seeing me. It's adorable dog. And yeah, the parking up there is atrocious, so I'm glad to see that they're adding more I would, it would be interesting to see for all of the Greek houses up there if we really do have three-quarters parking for total amount of residents for all of the Greek associations. That would be an interesting metric to have.
You know, we actually had that conversation with, I forget the gentleman's name, but when the Here project came before us, he came in with his anticipated number of vehicles that he estimated based on student population that would be there. And I remember he told Mike and I when we, when we met with him that, you and I both told him that his number was completely off-base, that it was going to be substantially higher. And I think his number was, what, 60% of students would have a car?
Yeah.
And we said, "There's no way. It's going to be so much higher than that." And then sure enough, he showed up at city commission the next Tuesday and said, "Yeah, you guys were right." We had, it was a number closer to 90% than it was 60. So, yeah, I realize that for this specific item, it's, it's not, not on the agenda, but I agree with Paula and Bill that it's something worth looking into. If we require one for multifamily, it seems strange to me that we would require a different standard for RMG.
Mayor, we have an active text amendment being processed right now on the parking article of the code, so it would be appropriate for us to take that direction and look at those issues. There are some competing data out there. KU, at the time of the Here project, shared with us, and even with their Central District project, shared some numbers that they've got their parking, overall, the entire universe of students at, in the mid-70s, I think, percent that get, pull permits for it, but you don't know how skewed that is in different ways, but we'll take a look at it.
That's just students that pull permits, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Right, that's what I mean, that's why I say it may be skewed in different ways, but we'll take a look at that and research that and make that part of our parking amendment.
These are streets that are residential, they don't need permits for.
Scott, how much undeveloped RMG-zoned property is there in Lawrence?
I think two lots.
So the effect of this would be two lots.
But there could be redevelopment over time.
Oh, okay, so redevelopment.
Or new areas zoned RMG. We have that inquiry once in a while.
So if we were to, if we were to look at a change in, in the parking requirement, I don't want to go too far because I realize that that's not part of this this evening, but the truth of the matter is, like a major rebuild of, say, the SAE house several years ago, something like that, because of the, I'm going to guess, 60% of the building being changed, would require an update to the parking?
It, it could, under certain circumstances for existing homes that meet a certain threshold of development, yes.
Okay.
In the future, right.
So some of them wouldn't be able to build back in the footprint because they wouldn't have enough parking. They may not- Yeah, they may not be able to meet it, but, you know-
Possibly, in which case they'd have a variance option before then.
Okay.
But you're right, that's a issue as that parking amendment comes through to discuss and debate those issues.
But I think it's worthwhile that, you know, Commissioner Herbert bringing it up, that we send the direction to have that included as part of that parking amendment, you know, the inclusion of RMG.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then the item that's before us, and Mayor, I want to, I want to thank the neighbors and the applicant, you know, being able to work together with being able to create additional parking and take care of the additional runoff possibilities. The conditions, again, had to deal with the revised site plan and the stuff about the stormwater, those the two.
Does that, does number one cover the revised site plan with the stormwater? It just says approve the application as far as our actions.
I just wanted to make sure that the application was the site plan.
Yeah.
It is, it is to be the revised plan that was in your packet. So you had a copy of what staff approved administratively and what the applicant proposed, so you could see it visually with those 10 additional spaces. So our recommendation is that you approve that revised plan with the 10 spaces with a condition that they include best management practice. So they will have to go back and revise the plan to get that piece.
Is that the motion we want to make?
Yeah, I think, I think it is. I, I just think that, I, I think that there, there is good things that have happened here because of the communications, and I think that, I think it's the best result of, you know, planning here. So I feel good, especially like the, the green space that, you know, has been able to be retained, so I want to thank everybody for that. So I, you know, Mayor, if, if we're done there, I'd make a motion to, I guess-
It is, it does have revised on the main agenda part.
Concur with staff's recommendation of approving the revised site plan as submitted by the applicant, which includes the 10 additional parking spaces for the two Greek houses, and then also the item that deals with stormwater best management practices.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Amick.
And also, did we need to include in that motion, excuse me, the direction that's-
For the RMG parking?
I'll just take that direction. You can expect that to be included in the- Text amendment process.
Good question, good question. All right.
I'm just having so much trouble carrying you over here to the firm room.
So the motion is to approve the revised site plan with the stormwater management best practices condition.
Any questions from the college this day?
We were talking about the RMG parking, if that needed to be included. Yeah, it doesn't have to be included in the motion that we're doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, is there a second?
Yes, I was the second.
Okay, so motion made by Mayor Amick's, or Commissioner Amick's, seconded by, there's just so many times you say that.
Yeah.
Seconded by Commissioner Herbert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously for- Motion passes unanimously for, oh. All right, thank you all for coming tonight. We're going to take a little five-minute break so we can bring Lisa back in. Uh-oh. Mayor, it's, hi, hi.
So what we kind of have been telling people all along is this is not a wish list. This is not a wow, we'd love to do this, or you know, we would, we would love to be able to tackle this problem. This is what can we do with the resources we have now? So you'll see that reflected in the goals, that they're very realistic and they have to be attainable because our funding could rely on that. So the assessment, as I kind of mentioned, utilizes a large amount of HUD-provided data and maps, and it's done through an assessment tool. The assessment tool and a lot of the maps and all the data has been available to the public this whole time, so there's a really high level of transparency with this, with this process. And local data and local knowledge are extremely important as well. And we met with different subject matter experts, we met with the school district, we met with independencing. Anybody whose data was pulled into this from HUD, we tried to talk to and get their take on it to add to local knowledge. And we are among the second group of communities and states to submit this. So there really was not a lot for us to look at in terms of how other state, or how other communities had done this. Not to mention, there wasn't a lot of peer communities that we could look at. I think we ended up using Wilmington, North Carolina, and then Hamilton, Ohio. Those were really the two that we were able to look at. So the public comment period for the document that is attached to the agenda started on September 1st, and it's a 45-day comment period. So our hope is that we do get a lot of public participation in this. We've actually had pretty good attendance at some of the public meetings. We're not used to a lot of people coming to our public meetings, so we had 25, 26 at one, and that was, that was pretty exciting to have, to have people show up. So we're hoping that we're going to have more comments to submit with this. So the entire Assessment of Fair Housing document, the analysis part that makes up the majority of the document includes the demographic summary, segregation and integration information, and then there's a racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty or recaps is what HUD calls those. A side note on recaps, Lawrence does not have any statistical recaps from HUD. So some of the other assessments that we looked at, that was the basis of almost their whole plan, was working with these recap areas. We don't have any, so we had to take a different approach with ours. To continue, disparities in access to opportunity, disproportionate housing needs, publicly-supported housing analysis, disability and access analysis, and then fair housing enforcement outreach, capacity, and resources are all of the analysis that kind of brought us to the priorities and goals. For the public participation piece, we really lucked out because as we were working on this, it coincided with the 50-year anniversary of the Fair Housing Ordinance. So we really got to piggyback on a lot of those meetings and take the assessment, or the, the survey tool and talk to people about what we were doing. So we also had three standalone meetings on the AFH. We had a Lawrence listens poll on the website, and then we had a survey that was pretty widely distributed in the community that we got pretty good, we think, results from. So the survey results and community engagement piece can be seen on the third section of the assessment, and we have everything broken out in terms of how everyone answered all the questions. So the two areas where the public overwhelmingly provided feedback on our surveys centered around affordable housing and also safe housing. So affordable housing and fair housing are not the same thing, but affordability is a piece of fair housing. So that's really kind of what rose to the top of that. So the public input, along with the analysis, helped us get to the goals. With each area of the analysis, we had to choose contributing factors to whatever that area is. Contributing factors, along with the local knowledge and the public involvement, were utilized to, again, craft the goals and priorities. The factors could run anywhere from affordable housing, lack of affordable housing, to loss of affordable housing, transportation, job proximity, anything like that could have been a factor. And they provided us the factors and we just had to choose from them. So that kind of gets to the, the part that HUD, I mean HUD cares about the whole document, but this is the part that they're wanting to see. I'll, I'll go through every piece of this particular goal, and then I won't do that on the rest of them because you'll kind of get the idea of, of how it works from this one. So affordability, as I said, with the citizen engagement really rose to the top. So one of our first goals is to increase affordable housing options. The contributing factors, again, which are the factors that HUD provides that we have to choose from, would be location and type of affordable housing, loss of affordable housing, availability of affordable units in a range of sizes, lack of access to opportunity due to high housing costs, displacement of residents due to economic pressures, lack of affordable accessible housing in a range of unit sizes. The fair housing issue that this tackles really hit all of them, with the exception of the recaps that we don't have on there. And then the metrics, milestones, and timeframe is where we really have to hone down and say what we're going to do, and it has to be measurable. So we just went for this utilizing the funding sources we have now, because that's, we can't anticipate other funding sources at this point. So utilizing our federal grants and then also the Housing Trust Fund, we can build up to 15 affordable units by the end of the con-plan cycle with just that money. So of the 15 affordable units, at least five of them will be accessible. And then develop eight to 10 units of housing for individuals facing serious and persistent mental illness within three years. We then have to list who's responsible for that. For this particular one, it would be the city and the housing authority. That doesn't mean the city is going to build the housing. All that means is that we're going to support it in some way, we're going to be a part of the process. It doesn't mean that we're the ones building that. The second goal would be to explore additional revenue streams for funding, for funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. As I said, this process has been going on for a long time, so this goal was in place before there was even talk of the sales tax. So we tried to align this with the Affordable Housing Advisory Board's goals and missions, and this was one of them that was important to them, was to find additional revenue streams for affordable housing. So that is one of our goals that we have on here. The third goal is really something that the city has been a part of since really the beginning of the Community Development Block Grant, and that's looking at the housing stock that we have currently, and how do we keep that safe and an affordable place for people? So this is looking at housing rehabilitation, energy efficiency improvements, modify accessibility, and then furnace, emergency loans, anything like that. So it's, it's a different way of looking at housing, is not building it up, but taking care of what we have. And then the last one I'm going to talk about before I turn it over to Shannon is something that we kind of all struggle with, and that's improve the public perception of affordable housing. For this particular goal, what we're looking at is trying to get more landlords involved in Section 8 housing for more of a, to disperse it across the community. So we're, we will hold at least one landlord education summit annually to discuss the different options we have and the different voucher programs, talk about safety issues, just, you know, anything we can to kind of get the word out about what's available. And then also to annually publish marketing material regarding fair housing and affordable housing. Then I will turn it over to Shannon for the next four, and then Scott's going to take the last two.
Okay, show me how to advance the slide.
See the arrow? Great, okay.
So the next goal is to, and Shannon Ory, the Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority. The next goal is to commission a housing needs market assessment. An RFP was issued already earlier this year, and this project is in the works to, to create a contract to, to get this study completed. And while most of us have an idea that we need affordable housing, we think this study will certainly help us identify just exactly what kind of housing, whether it's first-time homeowner, how much rental, those types of more specific questions. So that's one of the goals, is for us to understand our market and, and what our greatest needs are. The next one is to expand housing choice and access to opportunity. And this is one that is, there are quite a few projects, and if you look at the assessment on page 208, we list some of the current affordable housing projects that are out, that are already developed in the community and in the county. Several of these projects will, will reach the end of their affordable restriction period. And the Housing Authority in 2006, with the approval of the City Commission, already purchased one of these properties, and, and all of the Housing Authority that is owned by the city and administered by the Housing Authority has a permanent affordability deed restriction on it. So there are properties that are currently affordable in the community that will exit or can exit the affordable market. We had one project exit, I think it was in 2012 or so. The way HUD allows a property that was affordable and received a HUD loan to exit the affordable market is, is either through a gradual increase in the rent and/or once an affordable, a tenant who required an affordable rent exits the property. So the Housing Authority and, and I know the staff at the city, we have an eye out for these projects and, and will pursue any way to, to try to keep them in the affordable market. The next goal is to increase homeownership. So the Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority, since 2002, has had a down payment match for participants in any of the Housing Authority's programs. Since 2002, we've helped 81 families become first-time home buyers. We will continue that, we continue to seek applicants for that. We partner with both Habitat and with Tennessee Homeowners to try to make, for us, our ultimate success story is that a family moves out of one of our assistant, assisted programs into their own home that they've just purchased. So we will, we will continue to fund that program. We also partner both with Tennessee Homeowners and HCCI to do a lot of first-time home buyer education programs. And we will continue to do that and hopefully have more and more participants able to do that. And the final goal that I am talking about is, is to increase recruitment and outreach to private landlords. We continue to outreach to different landlords to provide information on how to participate. We have started keeping, and, and it started with one of, an AmeriCorps that we had, but, but kind of working with our participants to locate a landlord and helping the landlord and the participant sort of get all the documents that are required to participate in this program kind of put together. Sometimes it is a lot to ask a landlord who has either a regular job or a ton of units. You know, it's paperwork that's required by HUD and, and we have to have it, but we're trying to figure out a way from the Housing Authority's perspective on how to help get that done, and so that we can have a greater level of participation. And before I turn it over to Scott, I just want to say that I think one of the pieces that we really need to celebrate in this assessment is the fact that we have no recaps, and I think all of us stand on the shoulders of people who came before us, but, you know, 50 years, that City Commission enacted the Fair Housing Ordinance, and every commission since then has supported both, you know, those efforts and the ability for a tenant to complain about when they felt like they were being discriminated against. And we have none of those areas because of all of that work, and so I just want to say thank you to this commission and to all the prior commissions for being committed to that. Thank you.
I'm Scott Wagner, I'm management analyst with the City Attorney's Office, and I do a lot of work with the Human Relations Commission. And thank you, Shannon, for that shout-out to the commission of 50 years ago. Yeah, the, the data did, did show that we, we don't have those racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty in the community. And as Shannon echoed, it was due to the work of this governing body in the past. And it doesn't mean that we don't have issues to address, and that's why we've put this document together. The Human Relations Division of the City Attorney's Office is responsible for enforcement of our local fair housing code, and in most instances, we investigate fair housing complaints filed with the City of Lawrence. Our goal in this particular section is to increase enforcement, both by increasing awareness and increasing training for our fair housing investigators. Our division does receive a small annual grant from HUD that can be used for these efforts in this particular section of the plan. The city and our division is what's known as a FAP agency, a Fair Housing Assistance Provider. And for the next federal fiscal year, we've received a small grant from HUD in the amount of $31,600. And of that amount, $10,000 can be used for training, so that's one of our goals listed, is to continue to provide training for fair housing investigators. $14,000 can be used to reimburse the city for case processing costs, so that can be used to help meet this goal. So our goals in this section is to hold at least one fair housing workshop annually in partnership with other agencies, and we often do that in partnership with the Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority and other agencies in the community, such as Housing and Consumer Credit Counseling, especially during April and Fair Housing Month, we try to particularly promote our fair housing law, what the protections include and enforcement in the community. Last year, we put on a seminar entitled Animals in the Law, which talked about the protections under the code for persons with disabilities and in need of assistance animals. So those are one of the types of trainings that we will continue to put forth in the community. The next set of goals that our division put, put forth in this plan is to increase in fair housing enforcement efforts. We also provide outreach and education regarding what our local fair housing law is. The goal in this section is to increase the outreach efforts by holding at least one fair housing outreach event annually, again, in partnership with other Lawrence agencies. This could be anything from an educational seminar to a Fair Housing Month event focused on a particular issue, or just fair housing law in general, or providing fair housing information at an appropriate event. And again, I think our office does a pretty good job of trying to partner with area agencies to spread the word on what the protections of our local fair housing code is. I want to turn it back over to Dan.
Let's wrap up real quick. So we, as I mentioned, will submit this to HUD on November 1st. These goals could and probably will change, honestly. We've done our best to create the measurable, attainable, and achievable goals, but I don't think that we came across one community that hadn't had their plan rejected by HUD yet. So they'll never accept, they'll, they won't accept your plan, no, they'll accept it, they'll never approve it. So we just have to wait and see if, they have 60 days to let us know if we have to amp up any of our answers, if we need to add more goals, kind of if there's any changes that need to happen. So we will let you guys know if there are changes that, that have to happen. So the, this particular document will come back to you guys the middle of October, probably in your third October meeting for final adoption, and then we have to put it all into the HUD system and submit it by the 1st. We also presented this plan to the Human Relations Commission, as well as the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, and we also sent the draft to some of the stakeholders that helped us in this, just so we could get any additional input they might have. So the last thing, I just really want to thank everybody who's been involved in this. This has been probably one of the bigger projects that any of us have ever worked on. So thank you to Brad and my staff especially, he did so much work on this, and Scott and his crew, and Shannon and her staff. So it took a team effort definitely to, to get this done, and we understand why consultants do this. With that, we'll, we're available for any questions you have.
Yeah, it's over 300 pages long.
Yeah.
When you have the final version, I do want to get a copy of that.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm sure we'll hold it on the website. Because we have, we have a dedicated AFH page, so that's where we have a lot of the events, actually, I can probably pull it up here. Yeah, so we have this dedicated page that talks about, that's where the draft is, and then kind of where the rules at, all the events we've had, the survey's still on here. But this is, we'll definitely let you know when the final is final, and we'll have it up here.
Excellent.
And it'll include any other public comment we get before it's submitted.
Excellent. Okay, any questions for Dan?
You did say that the survey was still on, correct?
It is still on.
People can still make their comments.
Yeah, we actually had surveys up through last week, right?
Still receiving.
Still receiving them, yeah, so.
Okay.
But no more public meetings, right?
We don't have any more public meetings.
All right, any other comments or anything?
Thank you.
Thanks, Dana.
Yeah, thank you.
Everyone.
Good thing you don't have to do it every year.
Made us miss the AI.
All right, so we're on to number four.
Do we need to receive this?
Oh, yeah, public comment. Yeah, we should probably do public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? All right, thank you. So the action was just to receive it? Do we need a motion to receive that? Normally, we don't. Do you want me to go ahead and do one?
It would not be.
Okay, well, I'll move that we receive the assessment of fair housing report. Motion made by Mayor Sodin, seconded by Commissioner Herbert. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, so now we're on to number four. Consider the following actions related to advisory boards and committees of the City of Lawrence. First of all, we've got A, a resolution, and then we have an ordinance for one of them we're ready to do already. All right.
Good evening, Mayor Fisher, this is our assistant city manager. This is a follow-up to your August work session where you talked about advisory boards, and as a reminder, for the public, this was an initiative that's identified in the adopted strategic plan to look at advisory boards and opportunities for consolidations and other streamlining, and also some additional standardization. So during the meeting on August the 8th, there was some feedback related to a proposed policy on advisory boards. The, the policy is meant to provide that standardization and a bit of that streamlining, both in terms of documenting some procedures that haven't been documented previously, for example, exactly how somebody gets appointed to an advisory board. But there's also some elements of the policy that talks about that orientation should be provided, that there's a mechanism in there that talks about how a board member might be removed. There's a requirement that the City Commission approve bylaws that are adopted by the advisory boards. There's some language regarding our desire to have public engagement with advisory boards, and having, of course, the public posting of agendas, but also in minutes, and then also reaching out to the public through email distribution lists and anybody who's requested notification of meetings. And then we also addressed in the policy the issue of city employees serving on advisory boards, and there's a statement in there that would prohibit a regular or part-time city employee for serving on an advisory board in a voting capacity, and that's to avoid any potential conflict of interest with their city responsibilities. And then there's a requirement that public comment on agendas, items would be allowed at advisory board meetings unless there's some kind of prohibition on that legislation that creates that board in the first place. So at the meeting on August the 8th, you all provided some additional comment to a draft policy that we had created, and as a result of that, the policy that you have in, in front of you includes some term limits. Specifically, it indicates that the city's policy would, would have terms on advisory boards limited to consecutive three-year terms, with any exceptions to be made at the time of appointment. So I think you all realize that there may be exceptions to that from time to time. Also, you had discussed city commissioners serving on advisory boards, and I believe there was some concern that, that as a member of this body and you're serving on an advisory board, you're involved in a vote on an advisory vote that then ends up coming to this body for action, and maybe some conflicts or different hats that that sometimes requires you to wear. Although, and so we did include that in the policy, that city commissioners wouldn't serve as voting members on advisory boards, but we believe it is appropriate for city commissioners to serve on governing boards, because governing boards that receive funding from the city, for example, their decisions do not come in front of this body, and it may, may be very appropriate for city representation in terms of those particular boards. And there may be some other task forces, for example, from time to time, that, that may be very helpful for elected officials to serve on. I'm thinking of the Horizon 2020 review for, as an example. Also, staff did add a clarification in the policy that's in front of you that relates to city employees' service on, on boards, and we were trying to address a situation where there might be a city employee who is in fact an elected official of another jurisdiction, and we may, there may be a joint board where that employee is serving as their jurisdiction's representative, and we wanted to make sure that we stated that that is appropriate in those cases. So those were the comments on the policy. That policy we have in front of you is one that we would recommend adoption on. I did want to just briefly mention, also included in the packet for this evening is a memo that you've seen before. We attempted to review some of the follow-up items from that August meeting. This policy is one of those. The action, next action on your agenda is also one of those items. We had several other additional follow-ups there, and I just, again, wanted to confirm if we have missed something, or if there's anything that's on the, the list of follow-up items that you don't want us to pursue, if you would let us know. Otherwise, we do plan to continue to bring those back to you. We don't have a specific timeline on those, but we'll be bringing different pieces back over the next few months or so. Our original thought was that this would kind of stretch out a bit until probably through the beginning part of next year, by the time we get cleanup done. And one other quick thing that I wanted to add, for example, if you adopt the policy this evening, there is some cleanup items that we will likely need to be doing with some of the other boards that aren't on this list. For example, one that pops into mind, the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, for example, that Commissioner Bulley serves on, we would probably want to make those changes to remove the commissioner representative on that board and follow up with that action then in a future time, and it's just going to take a little bit of a time for us to get all those kind of procedural things lined up. So that may be something that you all want to talk about in terms of perhaps your continued service on some of those advisory boards until we get that other cleanup accomplished, whatever you would feel would be appropriate in that regard. We just didn't want to cause a potential quorum problem with some of the existing boards. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So we should all keep going.
It may be a good idea until we can get that completed.
Okay. Okay, any questions for staff?
Diane, one had to do with the public comment on boards. A couple of weeks ago, we talked about the review board and establishing bylaws that would come back for final discussion on, you know, public comments section of that. It talks about, public comment will be accepted unless it is otherwise specified in the legislation that creates the board. Is that the bylaws that are included in the creation of that board?
Yes. Yes, those are the kinds of examples that we wanted to be sure and, and, and cover in that, in that statement in the policy.
Okay, I just making sure.
Any other questions for Diane? Okay, let's do public comment. Is there any public comment on this item?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Ted Boyle, North Lawrence Improvement. I'd just like to make a couple of comments on two of the boards. One is the Sales Tax Audit Committee, and I believe that's a valuable tool for the city right now, considering the elections are coming up. And I have to say that I've been on that Sales Tax Audit Committee since that Sales Tax was approved in 2008. And so I can also, as being a part of that group, I can tell you that every nickel, dime, and penny has been spent to what the voters voted for. Anybody that says it isn't, you know, we meet about every three months or so, and I can tell you... and I can tell you that every dime has gone to what the citizens have voted for. So if this sales tax gets approved this time, or any part of it, this advisory board should continue, because it's the goal between, between City Hall and the neighborhoods, the neighborhood associations. I know what we used to talk about at the meetings I take back to the North Lawrence residents so that they know where their money's being spent. The other one is the Community Development Advisory Committee. Without those neighborhood representatives on that committee, and especially the low-mod representatives from the neighborhood, I believe that, we believe that if it was laid the burden upon the city commission or staff to come up with how that money's to be divided up, which I say that money is less and less every year. I can remember 20 years ago when we were getting a million point two or a little more than that, and now I think it's a little over $600,000 to split up. So I believe that that Community Development Advisory Committee should be kept as it is. And, you know, I've served on a lot of these boards over the 22 years that I've been president of North Lawrence Improvement. So those two, those two committees are very important as corresponding with the community. So, thank you.
Thank Ted. I think that is in our plans to keep the Sales Tax Audit Committee.
Good evening. My name's Melinda Henderson. Excuse me, Melinda Henderson. I live in Brook Creek, which is a low-mod neighborhood, and we do have a representative on the CDAC. So I just want to second what Ted said about keeping CDAC as it is. And also, on the Sales Tax Advisory Committee, I think public oversight is really important since you're asking the public to vote on this. So I hope you guys reconsider that and keep the Sales Tax Audit Committee in if the sales taxes are renewed or repurposed. Thank you.
We are planning on keeping the Sales Tax Audit Committee.
We do, we need to make some adjustments to the code language that talks about the current sales taxes.
But I think we need to be clear that we'll be keeping it.
Yeah.
You can be clear.
Thank you.
That's the direction we received.
Yeah, that was previously done, so.
Yeah, it sounds like perhaps the CDAC changes should have their own future agenda item.
And they would come back.
Yeah.
Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is KT Wells, 732 Rhode Island, and I concur about the CDAC with the first two speakers. I just wanted to talk about a procedural issue at the Historic Resources Commission, but I need to know if it's going to be for all the advisory boards in town or just what's going on. So relatively new rule at the Historic Resources Commission meetings is that the meetings may not be recorded except by the city. It's odd, but I don't know if this is a new rule for all of our advisory boards. This is problematic because although meeting recordings are often available online, which is great, there was a technical snafu at a very important meeting last year, and no recording exists. We always have the written minutes, but often these are available months later for many of our advisory boards. This no-recording rule means we must and do take copious notes, but I assume the city's recording would stand up in court better than just a citizen's notes. We learned during the Borders bookstore process, when Borders wanted to come in and tear down the livery stable at 7th and New Hampshire, when a group of preservationists had to hire a lawyer and appeal to the state, that the HRC and city commission meetings figured heavily in the case, and our notes don't count in a courtroom. Lastly, a no-recording rule seems contradictory to this commission's and Mr. Marcus's work towards more transparency, which I'm really happy about. Perhaps there are legal issues I just don't know about, but it would be great if at least this no-recording rule could be explained to the public. Thank you.
Yeah, it sounds like something we have to look into, perhaps.
When did that go into effect?
When did that happen?
A few months ago.
And the HRC, we aren't doing any changes to that. That's not considered an advisory board. I haven't seen any mention of that in our future changes, right?
The, the human relations.
The Historic Preservation.
Not the Historic Preservation.
Yeah. Yeah, I said HRC, didn't I? Yeah, that's my fault. All right, any other public comment?
Richard Hague from the Airport Advisory Board. I just was wanting, just a clarification on the exemption rule, because we do have some times when there's projects that carry over to where it would be advantageous for the city to have somebody on an extended term. And with the exemption at a time of a appointment, would that apply to reappointment?
So you're talking about term limits?
Correct.
Yeah.
So that if there's a project that's continuing on after a term that one of the board members is very involved with, would we be able to return, retain that person?
Right.
Even though it wasn't a time of appointment that the exemption was made. But also, we have a board member that has been on the board, somebody assigned to the board from KU, that there's been a KU representative on the board. That representative usually carries over more than just the two terms. So that person would be like an exemption at appointment. But would, would people that are on the board in the future need reappointment? Would the exemption be at that time, since it says exempted at the time of appointment?
That's definitely something we need to talk about a little in the future specifically regarding those. We definitely don't want to bang those out right now. But one thing that I have made sure to tell people on boards that I perhaps have not reappointed because they've been on there for a long time, is just because they're not a board member doesn't mean they can't be active.
Exactly. They're open for the public part of the meetings and things like that. Exactly.
Exactly. Okay. Well, that's something that we'll dig into a little more in detail. Yeah, the exemptions clause, possible exemptions might have a lot of interesting.
Exactly. And I think if there was, for a reappointment, that would be up to the future commissioners, whether to reappoint that person and create an exemption or.
Right.
And I think, if I recall, our discussion on that, a lot of the exemptions were directed at boards that were kind of of a highly technical nature. I think largely because of, you know, a lot of those contractor boards, we have a hard time filling the spots, you know, and so to tell somebody who's, you can only serve three years, even though we struggled to even find a person that would fit. So I'd be curious about the Airport Advisory Board, if that would qualify in that kind of highly technical arena.
I think it's good for somebody, you know, one term really gets their feet wet and gets them moving and understanding the FA guidelines and FA obligations and regulations, and then is a real advantage to the city. A lot of times, the city has sent board members to FA conferences and things so that they understand what the city's obligations are. So when they bring issues to you guys, it's already been something that's not going to get you guys in trouble by enacting.
Yeah. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, guys.
Any other public comment?
Jennifer Hernandez. I think that I really appreciate an opportunity to have standardized committee and board requirements, and I think that that's helpful from which to make exceptions, rather than working for every board and advisory board and committee having exceptions for every single one of them. So I applaud that kind of standardization. What I heard last time in the public comment was very much, I think this is a great idea, don't touch my committee. And I think that there's good reason for that, because these are people who care a lot about our community, who are dedicated and have spent a lot of time giving their energy and resources to our community. And so I would like the commission, as well as staff, to consider when looking at some kind of reorganization. And I know a lot of that has been worked out, but looking at more like a zero-balance budgeting way of going about it, and, you know, looking at what are we legally rebound to provide? What are the things that deal with money that we have to have available? And then looking, what do we want? What matches with our priorities? And building our committees from that direction so that we can allow the existing committees and advisory boards to sunset in a way that shows the individuals who are parts of those committees how appreciative we are for their contribution to our community and allows those to evolve over time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? Okay, so back to the commission.
I'm going to go to KT's comment. That caught me off guard, and frankly, is pretty concerning. I don't quite understand what the purpose of a restriction on recording would be if it's an open meeting.
We'll have staff look into it.
I think we'll follow up with the planning staff and find out if that is in fact happening. Maybe an education, an educational opportunity.
Please, thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Well, the only, the only comment that I would have about the policy is I feel strongly about, you know, the city employees, but, you know, the city manager made good points several weeks ago when we talked about this. You know, we have gotten some great folks to be able to serve on some of our committees from our staff. And, you know, I wouldn't want to put any of them in a situation of causing any kind of conflict. I mean, I understand that, but I do have to say that I want to thank all the people that I've had the opportunity to appoint in the past, have done a great deal of work on, you know, the various boards from our staff. So, you know, it's, it's a good overall policy. I want everybody to know that. I just, that would be one place that I might have a problem with, but I'm not going to vote against it because of that. I just, I've got to say that because we've had some really good people.
Well, I think that this is, I guess, the second part of this whole process of looking at advisory boards. We had our work-study session, and now this is building, I believe, a really good foundation as we move forward with the bylaws, as well as consolidating or sunsetting some of them. But this start right here is a very good foundation, I think.
Any thoughts?
I'm very happy with the policy. I really appreciate that we're having a default position on term limits from which we can make exceptions as needed. But I think we need to make sure that there are places for people to come in and serve who haven't served before. And sometimes it's hard to do that if you don't have turnover in your boards. We have more issues that we need to come to grips with on, on these advisory boards, and this is a really good way to try to get to some of the diversity that, that we need to move towards. And as I say that, having served on a couple advisory boards, I do appreciate the work the citizens have done on them. We've benefited greatly, and I'm going to miss being on the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, because I've learned a lot. But I really do believe that we need to have the ability to make decisions at this desk without having great investment in the products that come to us and our peers.
Be an objective.
I can still go to the meetings, though. See, that's the joy.
Okay. Well, we have two items here. The first is the resolution establishing this overall policy. Does someone want to make that motion?
So moved.
Okay. So, okay, motion made by Vice Mayor Bulley, seconded by Commissioner Larson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just realized we didn't say the resolution number.
This is resolution number 7224.
Okay. Okay, so we're good for the first one. Okay, and so the second one, I'll go ahead and just make the motion. I'll read it.
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, we've got to.
We need to go through the steps with this one, too.
Oh, this is, oh, I see what you're saying. All right, so this is a separate conversation.
Right.
Please? I didn't realize this is a separate conversation. We're not doing public comment yet, though.
Okay. So this item is, again, a follow-up from, from the earlier discussion. So this attempts to look at the issues of economic development and the boards that we had working on economic development. This, this item, there's two ordinances that are included here. One would repeal the Joint Economic Development Council and fold its responsibilities into the existing Public Incentives Review Committee. So as staff was looking at this issue, and we looked at the roles and responsibilities of each of those boards, and actually personally attending both of the meetings, I think the boards do very similar things. There was one exception that dealt with the review and recommendation of the economic development budgets that are received from the agencies that work on economic development for the city, and they come forward to you all for funding every year. In that case, what we suggested was rolling that into the Public Incentives Review Committee. So you see the ordinance in front of you related to the Public Incentives Review Committee includes that added function. Additionally, in response to the policy that you just adopted, we remove on the Public Incentive Review Committee the service of the mayor and the vice mayor, or actually, it's traditionally been the vice mayor, but the ordinance called for an additional member of the governing body. Those two are removed, and what we did simply was add to the current one resident of the city that would be appointed by the mayor with the consent of the governing body, we increased that number to three. So the overall number on the Public Incentive Review Committee remains the same. We just shifted the position. So that's how we drafted it, but if there's any particular requirements that you want to talk about, there's some other categories of membership that are included in that ordinance that you may want to discuss. And again, in the duties section, we added the review of the economic development funding request. We also added some language about Perk making recommendations in the context of the city's economic development policy, also the city's comprehensive plan and strategic plan, and, you know, kind of other, other larger visions that the city has stated in terms of policy. And then the ordinance related to the Joint Economic Development Council is just simply rescinding that part of the code. We have been in communication with the county, because this particular body is a jointly-created body. They would need to take action to also rescind it, to make the action formal. And we've also informed the chamber. They have been involved in organizing these meetings since the creation of that particular council. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on this one.
All right, any questions?
Diane, the membership, is it eight members?
Yes.
Why would it be nine or seven?
I don't know. I didn't, we didn't change it, but, but that appeared to be the number that we had, had at one point. I think I added that upright, anyway.
If a four-to-four vote comes in from the committee, does that mean it didn't pass or just fails to get recommendation?
You got to call it in the air.
Yeah, there you go. I mean, it seemed to me that you would want to have an odd number so that you couldn't have a tie.
And we could certainly shore that up at this time if you would like.
It might be good. The county wanted to add their person that they had on JEDC. So if we look at making it nine people, then maybe just adding a county person might be good. I already know who they want to reappoint. Do we care about being eight enough to make it nine? You want to settle this now?
Does the county already have a rep on the Perk?
On Perk, they have the county commissioner, but not an actual.
Oh, just a rep. Okay.
But not like a member at-large county member.
The only thing I may comment on that is because we do have on Perk a representative of the county commission and a representative of the school board, that, that body does, from time to time, make recommendations on things that do go to the school board and the county for consideration. So you may just want to consider if it would be appropriate adding an additional person from the county versus not adding an additional person from the school. That would be, you're up to you to decide.
Would it be possible for us to do this tonight and then have you guys check with the various bodies and?
Yeah, maybe we need.
Do a second reading change if we need to?
With the county?
So what's contemplated here? Are you talking about bringing somebody from outside the city limits as a county member?
Well, there's two issues. One is what. One is what Commissioner Amick's brought up, that there's a possibility of a deadlock for a four-vote. And so I mentioned as a potential ninth person that perhaps having a county-at-large type person might be a good ninth person to add. I think it's something we'd have to talk to the county about.
And the PERC serves the school district and the county as well, is what I'm hearing?
It does. It was meant to be reflective of their participation. I think particularly as it relates to economic development items that only come to the commission for final approval. So tax abatements, for example, do not go to the county and the school district for their independent approval. This is a mechanism for them to have that approval. There are some things like the neighborhood revitalization area plans that come before you that they have representation on PERC. That decision comes to you all. And then the PERC recommendation is also forwarded to the county and the school board, and they do take action at their particular boards as to their participation.
Diane, excuse me, in reading the ordinance, it says a whole lot about PERC and the things that, you know, PERC does and how the committee will handle, you know, incentive requests. I do see a whole lot about what JEDC used to do in all of this. Maybe I'm just not reading it right.
Well, there is a separate ordinance that just repeals the section of the code dealing with the Joint Economic Development Council. And if you'd like me to, I didn't include that in the packet, but I could pull up that section of the code for you to look at. In looking at the responsibilities of JEDC as outlined in that code, it just didn't appear to us that there was a lot of duplication, with the exception of, or that there was duplication. The exception was the issue of the review of the budgets, which is why we included that verbiage in the ordinance on PERC.
And that's 12107D?
Yeah.
That was the responsibility of JEDC that was added to the PERC?
Yeah, and that's the new, JEDC is the three lines that are underlined blue that says, "And such recommendations should be made."
No, that's a different...
Well, yeah, that one, too. But also, "A" should be taken into consideration to the economic development policy, the city's comp plan and strategic plan, and the other relevant citywide policy. So I think that kind of covers some JEDC things. More broader views, but yeah, those are the two changes.
In the, well, I draw your attention to the, right under the first heading under PERC duties, it talks about PERC being an advisory board on all matters relating to the use of the city's economic development incentives. And that certainly does relate to the policy statements that are in the Joint Economic Development Council portion of the code and those responsibilities. So for example, when you had your major review of economic development policies this last year, both Public Incentive Review Committee and the Joint Economic Development Committee were consulted on that topic because both deal in the realm of economic development policy. So again, that's where we felt that there was some duplication of efforts between the two committees, with the exception of that budget matter.
And so this is a chance to centralize the advisory functions for the commission from the two bodies?
That's our recommendation.
Also, there's F, too. I don't know if you saw that, but other duties as assigned. Every worker's favorite job description requirement. All right, any other questions for staff? I'm pretty confident we have some public comment on this item. All right, let's do public comment. Come on up, Melinda.
Okay, thank you. I just, I need some clarification. I'm Melinda Henderson, again, from Brook Creek. And I did get to spend some time on the Joint Economic Development Council, which I really appreciated the time because I was able to learn a lot more about how we do economic development. So I understand that you do want to combine these two. Now, the Chair of the Economic Development Corporation, EDC, I believe is always a chamber member. And then there are people from the city and the county who also sit on that board, I think in pretty much an ex officio capacity when I looked the membership up today. I'm trying to do all this from memory. So I think it's inappropriate that the Chair of the Economic Development Corporation would have voting privileges on this board. I think it's a direct conflict of interest since the Economic Development Corporation is the one who is whining and dining the prospective clients and going over the incentives and everything. I don't think that's right. If it is right, could you all have a discussion on that and explain to me how that's appropriate? Because I'm not seeing it. So I would really appreciate that. Thank you. As far as county commissioners and school board representatives, so we've removed city commissioners from that, but the city's the one who has the final vote. But there are some items that will affect the county and the school board. So should they be voting on those as well since we removed the city commissioner, commission representative from being on the PERC because of a possible conflict of interest? I don't know.
I'll do your questions after you're done speaking.
Okay, and that's fine. I'm just trying to make sure I remember everything. So I think those were my main questions. Just trying to clarify, you know, why people do have voting privileges and when they should have, when they shouldn't have, conflicts of interest. And what would be very helpful for somebody nerdy like me would be a list of all the incentives and who, which governing body they affect. Would that be possible?
We can have Brett email you something like that.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah. As for an EDC member, I don't think we have one on PERC now, do we?
So he's been there?
Brad Burnside, I think, is the EDC.
Well, I thought I replaced him.
He's currently listed on the roster.
And he's the Chair of the EDC?
Yes, and so that is a position on the Public Incentive Review Committee that is by position. So the ordinance, the code as adopted calls for the Chair of the Lawrence-Douglas County Economic Development Board be that, build that position. We changed that slightly, only just to call it what it's called now, which is the Economic Development Corporation of Lawrence and Douglas County.
Oh, here it is. I see it now.
But that position has been on, as long as I have been an employee of the city. I'm not certain how frequently, every now and again when they have a new chair that's elected, but I don't recall the frequency of that.
And then the other question, I don't think we have an answer for, and that is if the county and the school board should remove their reps from PERC. I think that's for them to make that designation. I think we talked about that before. I don't think we were planning on making that decision for them.
And again, as I mentioned, there are certain things like tax abatements that I believe that their representation was intentionally placed here because they do not have a formal voice any other way. The city's decision on tax abatements is final.
Any other public comment? Okay, so back to the commission.
One of the questions that Ms. Henderson brought up had to do with how is it not a conflict that the EDC Chair is, there's not a conflict? And I think that that's an interesting point.
I have a question. Tom, are you on the EDC board?
I think I'm ex officio. Ex officio only.
So we could have this position be ex officio only?
Changes your voting patterns, but...
We wouldn't have to add...
Then it'd be an odd number.
I would say, though, that one of the comments that Ms. Henderson pointed out, that they're proffering or negotiating the incentives, and that really comes from the city. That comes from the city's staff more than it does the EDC. They are made aware of, you know, what we're considering. But those recommendations are largely run through this city's staff and on occasion consultants to us or bond counsel helping us frame a particular incentive package. With the addition of Steve Kelly, I think at the chamber, he's a little more intimately knowledgeable about, more than intimate, a little. He's pretty understanding of all the different tools. So he's conversant in it. But the actual hard negotiation is taking place between the city's staff, from my observation and experience since I've been here. And I think that's the way it should work. Now, I think Melinda has a point. The whining and dining is done at their end, which is part of the partnership because they have the relationship with the other businesses in the community, the hotels in the community, the transportation in the community, to achieve probably the best price point to accomplish those things. And that's kind of standard fare for those things occurring in the community. So, and quite frankly, I don't think that's something you want the city's staff doing. So it makes eminent sense that they'd be the one responsible for it, in my opinion, rather than have the city's staff involved in that. And the other thing that they do, I think, quite well is they integrate potential business interests in our community with like businesses, with potential business partnerships, with potential customers of a new business coming into the community. They make all of those connections. And they bring in business people that have done business here. They bring banks in to help them with, you know, the banking issues. They bring in different businesses in our community that connect to that business. That's something that is, in my opinion, absolutely appropriate for their role. And they do it pretty well, from what I've observed, in terms of both cost containment and developing those relationships. So I think from that standpoint, it works well. A lot of people have a misperception that, you know, the chamber is the one that's offering all of these funds up. Actually, it's the city's staff that, you know, refines the numbers, does the cost analysis, does the gap analysis. Those things are being done by us. And that's what determines what the incentivization is.
So do you think it's a conflict for the EDC Chair to be a voting member? Should we leave it like that, or would you recommend that we make them more ex officio?
Well, I would say that, I would say that they tend to fall on the spectrum of pro-business development versus non-development. You could have somebody that's just be opposed to a lot of things, too. I think they fall more on the end of the spectrum that they're pro-business, they're pro-development. And so they may not have the same kind of, you know, balance to it that others might. But you're gonna have people that are countering them, too, that get placed on the board that may have more of an old-growth kind of attitude about things, so. My observation is, is that they tend to be pro-business, pro-development, that sort of thing. Again, I would say to you, in my experience, that's not unusual to see them on those boards. But at the end of the day, these deals all come back to this city commission for final approval. And you have complete, as a majority, direction as to what this city's staff does in that regard and by setting up your policies. And so they're not giving anything away. They can't. So I'm not sure how big of an issue that part of it is. I think that we know what they are, and they act accordingly.
I think the fact is that there's always been discussion of the fact that we contract with the Chamber of Commerce, you know, to carry out our recruitment of economic development in Lawrence. And by placing this individual in a position of being able to vote or make recommendation to this body, you know, that probably adds a little bit more question, you know, to it as we have this discussion.
Sure.
But you're absolutely right. The truth of the matter is, is that the final outcome comes from this body, not from this new public incentive body.
I would expect that that person would recuse themselves from Item D under 2107, which is reviewing the economic development requests. I mean, isn't that the funding request from the chamber and the EDC is what we're talking about on Part D?
Well, those are separate entities.
Yeah, they should.
Well, I mean, they would have to.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't think they're gonna be weighing in on the funding request, right?
No, the only thing that I'm thinking is, is that the fact that we do contract with the chamber to handle the recruitment of businesses to Lawrence and the fact that there is questioning of the whining and dining or whatever, we wanna call it, we'll call it recruitment, is that as they sit on this board and make recommendation, does that present conflict? Well, I suppose there'd always be question, but the truth of the matter is the final decision rests right here.
If you go that far with the idea that there could be a conflict of interest, you'd almost have to have every position be an at-large position if you wanted to avoid...
Absolutely.
And how far do you want to take that?
One thing I did notice in here while I was looking at the PERC membership is what we've been calling a banker position is actually called a professional analyst. Maybe we could just make that language a little more clear as to what we're referring to.
Definition.
Yeah, that might be helpful.
We could sort of do that, Mayor. I think that it was written that way to sort of be intentionally broad. Because I think we've had accountants fill that role and a variety of different professions that could...
So maybe more a financial analyst, maybe that could encompass what we're looking for, other than just a banker. Bankers are pretty specific.
I think before that we did have the language that talked about, you know, like an accountant or CPA and that role. And it was pretty clear that it was just gonna be in that kind of position, wasn't it?
Well, this language that's in your ordinance here is the current code. It's not, it's not been changed. But it may have been at one time. We have changed it.
Maybe it was just understood.
Yeah, right.
I think, you know, the analytics part of it, again, just because you're a banker doesn't mean you have the analytic skills to do that. Just because you're a CPA doesn't mean you have the analytic bill background to perform the type of analysis that we actually perform. And again, I would tell you, we do the bulk of the analytics ourselves. Now, what's nice is when you have an analyst on these boards, they can understand what we're doing and query us as to, you know, how we came up with these assumptions, which go into some of these equations, as you all learned. And whether they're good assumptions, whether they're realistic assumptions is probably the better way of putting it. So I think it was intentionally broad so that, you know, we may attract a different profession, but that they have that kind of analytical ability to understand what we're doing when we're doing these financial analyses.
So you don't think that we need to change it to a financial analyst?
No, I wouldn't do that at this point. But going forward, if we run into a challenge and we need to redefine or define that. The one thing, you know, over the years in writing these ordinances, I will tell you, and I've probably said this to you before, we spend so much time trying to get this down to the 99.9% perfect ordinance, and a month later invariably we come back... And a month later invariably we come back and we amend something in it because we missed something. And, you know, I think you have to start looking at legislation as a living, breathing kind of document that needs to be looked at more frequently and tweaked, and we have to have more comfort. We can't wait this long to get back into these things. I mean, this has been a while before we've done this kind of overhaul, from what I can tell. So I just think, when we see these things, either the committee members see them and they say something, we got to have a process that kicks these upstairs to this commission. We make these minor modifications so we keep it current. So let's, my point would be, let's take a look at how this plays out, if there's issues. You know, the staff liaison's watching these for us on the staff standpoint, and the members should be, as well as the commissioners. And the public does as well.
So perhaps we can go ahead and approve what we have here now. But I do think that we need to send it to the county and the school board for them if they have any changes they want to make, especially to their own membership, they can make them.
Sure.
All right. So I think we've batted it around enough, perhaps. Anything else? So I think that the motion still is the same as what's written on here, right, Diane? We haven't-
I'd like to amend it to add an additional person or take one away.
Odd number.
Yeah, so that we can have an odd number.
Well, I think that when we have the county and the school board look at it in case they decide to remove someone and they want to add someone, I think that number might change in the future.
I would imagine that they're going to opt to not remove the representative. I mean, it's in their best interest to maintain the representation.
Well, what I mean is that instead of a county commissioner, they make a county representative, such as the person they had on JEDC.
That's still not going to change your number, though.
Yeah, still going to have eight.
Yeah, but they might want to add two people. I don't know, you know? I think that we need to send it to them to look at. You just want to add a ninth member right here, right now?
No, I just want the language to suggest that it be an odd number.
Just add a fourth person as an at-large position.
I mean, it doesn't make sense to have a board that votes that's an even number.
I think-
That'd be a message to us.
I think then we would have four city appointees, and I don't think that is exactly fair. That's why I think we need the county and the school board input.
Go over the fairness issue again.
Well, JEDC was split up between city and county. So if we add a ninth person right now, that they would presumably be a city appointee, that would make the fourth city appointee on that board, wouldn't it? How many city appointees will we have on there, then?
Three right now.
We have somebody from Sustainability Advisory Board.
Well, technically, he doesn't serve on the Sustainability Advisory Board. He was chosen by the Sustainability Advisory Board. I don't know.
I don't think we should make it more fair. I just think it ought to be an odd number so that you don't end up with a tie coming to us or a non-recommendation coming to us from the-
Well, do you want to go with two residents in the city? And then if they want to add one from the school board and one from the county, we'd go from seven to nine.
Okay, clarification. Is this, this is our board, right?
Oh, it is the city board.
But if we're reviewing economic development policy, I think we definitely need good county representation. That's, I'm feeling a little uncomfortable right now advocating for the county. Perhaps this is not ready. Perhaps we need to get their opinion before we pass this.
But it's, I mean, it's a city board, though.
Yeah.
But I'm not going to advocate for the county anymore. Not going to repeat myself.
Mayor, I think one of the things you might want to consider is, this is the first reading. And before you consider the second reading, you would have a chance to communicate with them and have that communication come back. And then if you wanted to kick it up to nine or kick it down to seven, you could do that as a part of the second reading.
That sounds like a great idea. That way we stay on track with them.
You stay on track, plus you get the input you want.
Perfect. All right, well, I'm going to make this motion, then. So we're going, well, then it has on here adopting on first reading. So really it would be adopting on second reading, though. Just be finalizing on second reading. So we don't have to change the language here on this.
Right. First reading.
All right, I'm going to make the motion to consider adopting on first reading ordinance number 9396, repealing the Joint Economic Development Council and consider adopting on first reading ordinance number 9397, assigning the former Joint Economic Development Council's responsibilities to the Public Incentives Review Committee and removing the mayor and vice mayor from service on the Public Incentive Review Committee.
And the second reading will only be considered once it goes past the school board and the county, Public Council Commission?
Does that, that doesn't need to be in the motion, though, does it? Yeah.
I just want, so it's understood.
It is definitely understood. Who's second in it? All right, so a motion made by Mayor Soden, second by Commissioner Larson. All who's in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Yeah, that's pretty awkward trying to advocate for the county. It's not what I do. They're fine people, though. All right, commission items. Do we have any?
Yes, I do have one. It's, this kind of came up in a conversation I had with a community member not too long ago. Kind of respurred my interest in having this conversation. So if you give me a minute, just kind of read a moderately prepared statement for you. In June 2015, approximately three months into my term as city commissioner, I had asked city staff about the future of a potential commercial recycling program in Lawrence. At that time, I was given the comment that, quote, "Expect a recommendation in the coming year." At a city commission meeting on December 20th, 2016, I again asked about the future of a potential commercial recycling venture. At that time, with solid waste individuals in the audience, I was told, quote, "Expect a staff report and recommendation in early 2017." Tonight is September 19th, 2017, 27 months after I first asked the question. And I must ask again about whether or not commercial recycle has any viability in Lawrence, Kansas. Recently, I received a request from the Lawrence Restaurant Association, specifically Chef Rick Martin, that is begging the city for a commercial recycling program. Last week, while attempting to fight insomnia via late-night TV, I came across the movie Money Pit. In the film, every time Tom Hanks' character asks his unscrupulous contractor of the week for a timeframe on their work, he's told, "Two weeks." So upon receiving the request from the Lawrence Restaurant Association, which I assume has been forwarded to city staff, I must beg that we not give them our traditional answer of "Expect a staff report in the next year." So I would ask our sitting commission that perhaps with our new work study that we do, that perhaps commercial recycling find a place so we can actually have a conversation, perhaps actually receive a staff report and a recommendation.
I was just looking at our future agenda items for work sessions. Is there perhaps time to do that? Obviously not in two, three weeks, but perhaps December? It doesn't look like December has any scheduled work sessions.
Yeah, you're going to have, we're going to kick the conference center issue ahead, so that likely would be in December, but-
Oh, we're not doing the downtown conference center? I guess we're doing the city manager's report right now. No, but we're covering the future agenda items now.
October might be available.
Okay, if they can do it that fast.
But Matt said, but Matt said he didn't want the answer that it was going to be done in the next year, so-
Well, I just-
I was going to give you two years from now.
You know, I'll take that answer. I just, you know, it'd be great if we could do that.
No, I don't have a problem bringing it back in October. Did I tell you that? We're going to get back on this?
Well, let's see, June 2015, you would not have been here yet. So you can't be blamed for the first one.
All right, so-
I was hearing the others are on my watch.
So we'll talk about that in October.
All right. It's probably going to move to December.
The second Tuesday in December. So we've already covered one of the city manager's reports.
At our joint meeting last night, I made a point about reroutes and providing information to the schools about reroutes of our transit system, our buses. And after I thought about it last night, I realized I don't really understand how that process works myself. So I'd like to get some information about how the reroutes are identified and how that information is communicated to the public. I know there's a reroutes page on our website. And I looked at it today, and there was a reroute for bus 11, which is one that I've ridden a bunch. So, you know, I just appreciate having that information. Thank you.
I think Brian's going to solve it right here.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I can, I think I can address that to some extent right now. And if additional information is desired, then we can work up a report for the next city commission meeting. This actually gives us an opportunity. So we do have the website, like you mentioned, the reroutes website, or the page on our Lawrence Transit website. Let's see. I was just going to pull this up for everybody. We have a new mobile site, or a new mobile app. And I think that this will be very helpful in communicating routes. If you remember, there has been quite a bit of conversation periodically over the last couple of years about the transit app. It has been a static app, which is basically just, it's just a table. And you look, and it says what time the route or the bus is supposed to be at a particular stop. And there's a disclaimer that says, you know, you should arrive at your stop. I believe it's like 10 minutes before or after that particular time. And you hope that it gets there. And usually it does, but sometimes it doesn't. So now, that's something that the transit staff has been pushing our contractor, MV Transportation, on, as well as KU on Wheels, has been pushing for this for some time as well. And we finally, I think it was just last month, or, yeah, it was August, right before school started, went live with our new app. This is the desktop version of it. But you can pull this same app up on your phone. You can get it on the Android or the Google Play Store for Android, or you can get it on your iTunes app. What is it? The Apple Store for your iPhone. This is, this is a route I take sometimes, around 10. And you can see, I don't know if everybody can see that, but these arrows, this is the green arrow indicating that the bus is en route, in motion. This is a red arrow, just right over here in front of the library at Seventh and Vermont, indicating that that bus is, well, now it's taken off. I don't know if you saw, but it just turned green. So you can literally watch our buses on any route on KU on Wheels and Lawrence Transit as they navigate the city and navigate the routes. And then you can select, well, see there, it stopped at the bus stop to pick somebody up right there. So you can, you can select your particular stop, and you can see here, I think it's estimated, if you see down there, for the bus to arrive in two minutes. That's the outgoing bus. So we're pretty excited about this. And I think that this is going to be very useful for riders who are affected by reroutes. We do run into reroutes particularly in the dense construction season during the summer. The way that we determine when a route is going to need to be rerouted is working out in advance of that construction project, knowing that it will impact particular routes, working with a contractor in many cases, especially around the KU corridor, working with KU on Wheels as well, in trying to figure out the best route that riders can still access, access their line with some level of normalcy. I will say, along the 19th Street corridor, around KU, there's been significant construction activity, and it has been inconvenient and has impacted riders. You know, we do everything we can to mitigate that. We put extra buses on the road. We put supervisors on the road in the field to try to navigate, identify any riders that may have missed a route. You know, we have great drivers through our contractor. And I've heard of several cases where, you know, if they see that somebody is off route or has been affected by a reroute and they're confused about it, they'll pick them up and they'll get them over. You know, they'll communicate with another bus and get them where they need to be. So we do everything we can in the field to make it work. But I do believe that this app is going to be very helpful in communicating reroutes in the future.
That's very good. I really appreciate that this is, you know, that you guys have worked on this and got the contractor to get it in. I may need a couple hours of instruction on how to work.
Yeah. I don't know the name of the app. I think it's My Bus Lawrence.
Yes, that's what he sold us at the-
Oh, yeah.
There's a link. You can access the link from the city's website. Or you can search either in the Google Store or the Apple Store. Sorry if I'm messing up the names. You can just search for My Bus Lawrence.
Let's send that information to the neighborhood association so that they can help to spread the word-
Okay.
-on our new app, how to reach it.
And I will say also, Bob copied me, Bob Nugent, our transit director, copied me on an email today, and he followed up first thing this morning to reach out and start that communication with the school district as well.
I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank Bob, too.
Yeah.
Will do.
Okay, any other commission items? Okay, so now we are on to the city manager's report.
Okay, a couple things to report on. There's an update on the short-term rental, otherwise commonly referred to as Airbnb. You recall, the commission directed staff to develop regulations on owners and properties being used as short-term rental properties. There was a stakeholder, there is going to be a stakeholder community meeting on Tuesday, September 26, 2017, 6:00 PM at City Hall in the commission room. We'll do a short presentation, and then we'll take public comment. There's a brief survey, which will be available online from September 26 to October 13. And this will help guide staff in the development of our short-term rental ordinance. Tentatively, we're planning on coming back to the commission on November 14, 2017. The Lawrence Loop alignment study, you know that there's two significantly incomplete sections. We held a open house in June to develop proposals for these routes. Over the summer, the study team evaluated the proposed routes, developed a series of alignment options, and we're now seeking input on those proposed routes. We held an open house last night at the library and received comments. And then we're taking a short survey, or there's a short survey available on Lawrence Listens so that you could comment on the alternatives as well. We also have a report in the manager's packet about cost of primary election update. This August 1st election cost the city $37,380. When we do have somebody else involved in the elections, we can split the cost. You'll recall that by ordinance 44, we reduced the number of candidates that push you into a primary from more than three times the number of candidates as there are members to be elected, to no more than two times. And of course, that lowers the threshold and puts us into that issue. We're planning on, for budget purposes, in those election years, where we might have a primary to just budget $40,000. I would ask that you think seriously about whether you want to change that threshold number again before it moves to a primary election. So keep that in mind going forward. Application period for the 2018 transit guest tax, we budget $150,000 in transient guest tax fund grants that we hand out or pass out. The application and program guidelines will be available October 5 The application and program guidelines will be available October 5 at lawrence.org/cmo/tgt-grants/. An information, an informational meeting will be held on October 5, or 6, rather, from 2:00 to 3:00 PM at the City Hall. Transient Guest Tax Grant Program will provide funding for specific events. You need to demonstrate a measurable economic benefit, including enhancing the cultural economy or travel tourism economy, create additional transit guest tax and sales tax, sales taxes, and enhance Lawrence's character and reputation for tourist activities, and demonstrates poll of regional visitors. Advisory Board reviews the apps and makes recommendations for funding to the full commission. Grant applications for 2018 are due by November 3, 2017. You go online and read this report, and have all the dates that you need. You have a number of other reports on this manager's report. I'm going to skip some, but I'm gonna jump to the, what we, the acronym FCIP, which stands for Facilities Conservation Improvement Program, for September 17. Busy summer, we included, or completed a number of projects, the City Hall window retrofits just in time for winter, so we shouldn't be needing all sorts of personal heating devices all over City Hall any longer. We're gonna control the draft. We put in a solar array at the fire station number five, HVAC and control upgrades at fire stations, art center, community health, East Lawrence Rec Center, Holcomb Rec, Prairie Park Nature Center, the outdoor pool, the indoor aquatic center, and the community building. We did a weatherization completed in most of our city facilities, and an LED lighting retrofit throughout parks, buildings, parking lots, sports fields, and parking garage. The other thing I want to mention, of course, is that Eileen Horn will be moving on to the state legislature. She will be another friendly face for our local delegation. We will miss her, she will be moving on from this position. She has been a wonderful sustainability director for the city and the county, in my opinion. But what's equally important about Eileen is her strong ethical core, and she understood the distinction of not being a full-time city-county employee at the same time she was a state legislator. We had that conversation, and she's chosen her path. She'll be around, she'll be an active member in this community, but we all should wish her well, and she's nearing the birth of their second child, so it's a very exciting time in their lives, and we wish Eileen all the best going forward. She's really been an outstanding employee for us. Future agendas, the one item that was on has been kicked during the meeting, to the 10-3-17 meeting from tonight. And then, on our work sessions, we had 10-17 listed as the downtown conference center that's likely to be moved forward to December. That will now be replaced by your item. Hopefully, we'll actually have a report with it as well, and it might be just an outstanding report after this much time in review. 11-14-17 will be the strategic plan update. We're kind of anxious to show you how that turned out, and how that will be formatted going forward, and the access to that. And then, the short-term rental ordinance, again, shows up on that date as well, and you're waving something at it.
Is this strategic planning related, or big stack?
Your performance.
Oh, this is your personal?
Yeah, that, no, that's, no, that's a little different. What, what I tried to share with you is a list of all of the different things that the departments have been involved in in the last 12, 18 months during my time here. I make it clear, I'm not responsible for all of those. Most of those are all the result of a team. What I'm suggesting is that we should, at some point, schedule a performance review for your city manager, and one of the things that I, I do annually is, I'm a credentialed city manager, it's a formal program in the International City Managers Association. Every so often, we have to do a performance review. There's all sorts of different acceptable performance reviews, and I'm looking at some of the formats, and my suggestion was that if I find a format that I think is, you know, is a good review, hopefully, we can, between my credentialing and your review, we could share the same format to do a performance review, and so I'll get you something as soon as I kind of landed on a good form. I think it helps to start with a good format that you could use in terms of the review, and I'll get you something at some point in the future, and then we should schedule a performance review. That's all I'm trying to say. And you also received a report from last night's meeting. Scott, I asked Scott to review the Queens Road project, and not just Queens Road, but more our land planning process, and our use of benefit districts, and the historical context from which they're in. There were some remarks that were made last night. They were not made, in my opinion, with the benefit of any contextual knowledge about how we do things, and so I thought it was best to set, set the record straight, and I have shared that with the county and school district governing boards as well. That's it.
Can I just go back for one sec? I'm sorry. To the FCIP report, and I noticed at the end of that, where we had installed solar at the fire department, fire station number five, in the first two months where they have fully operated it, we've already saved $3,500 in, in electrical costs, so that's extremely important to note as we go forward. It's working.
All right. I think, getting back to our agenda here, calendar should be next. If I can make it, go back. Any calendar items?
I was gonna suggest, Mayor, November 7 on Election Day, I know that we have several people that might have a real interest in that time, so what do we plan on, if, Mayor, if you would like? Start that meeting earlier in the evening, so that everybody can get on their appointed ways.
Yeah, and so what time would you like it to end? That's probably more important.
6:30.
6:30?
Would be nice.
What time?
6:30 would be nice.
6:30?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to make it a short agenda as well?
Well, I would suggest that.
We'll manage the agenda so that you can get done. Expect a lot on consent.
I just remember on, yeah.
Couple annexations.
Yeah, whatever. Queens Road.
Yeah, Queens Road.
Queens Road will be on.
If you could keep the pitchforks to a minimum.
All right, so, any other calendar items?
Oh, we should, I don't know if there's a quorum of us attending, but I think the Humane Society fundraiser is the 22nd. Is anyone else going to that, the furball?
Yes, I plan to be there.
I'll be there, so if there's a third, we should probably add it.
Probably put it on there.
It is at Avon Jakes, at 7:00 PM, 6:00 PM, on the 22nd? Let's go with 6:00. 6:00 PM on the 22nd, at Avon Jakes.
September?
Yeah, it's this, hold on, let me look my...
Friday?
This Friday.
Is it this Friday?
I think it's this Friday. Well, give me a second, all right.
I just know it's on my calendar, I...
This year, right?
It is...
Commissioners, we won't have an agenda that's published for next week, so we won't have something coming out Thursday, but in cases where we have had three, and there's discussion of city business at an event, we always put out notice accordingly.
Right, so, you can attend social events, but just refrain from being together discussing business of this body.
Okay. And that, and that doesn't mean that they can't actually converse about everything but that.
Correct.
Yeah.
For those who are interested, though, it is September 22 at 7:00 PM, at Avon Jakes.
It's a good promo as well.
It's a great, it's a great thing.
It is, it's a lot fun.
Okay, any other calendar items? All right, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Sodden, seconded by Commissioner Herbert. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone.